Evening everyone to NISPA's first virtual presidential town hall. This will be an opportunity to meet the two candidates for NISPA president for 2018. And to hear them answer questions that have been submitted by NISPA members. There'll be 10 questions that were selected that were representative of a wide range of topics and areas that would be of importance for NISPA members to know. What I'd like to do first off is kind of give a sense of how the evening will proceed. Each candidate will be introduced and will give a three-minute opening statement. We will then proceed to the questions and each candidate will alternate in terms of who will be the first to answer a question. Answers will be limited to two minutes and you'll be hearing me give a 15-second warning that there are 15 seconds left to the candidate's time. And then at the end of the evening, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement. So I'd like to proceed right now and get things going, but first I want to read a statement from Dr. Roy Aranda. Roy is past president of NISPA. He is the chair of the nominations and elections committee and Roy and the committee was their brainchild to bring this forward and he prepared a statement and because as all other listeners are limited and muted on this call, I'm going to read the statement for Roy. Dear NISPA members, thank you so much for joining us at this NISPA's first election town hall. Many NISPA members submitted questions and I appreciate the thoughtfulness and willingness to collaborate. I want to thank the candidates for stepping up to the plate and agreeing to participate in this town hall. Thanks goes to Dr. Peter Canaris, a wonderful NISPA asset and friend for many years for agreeing to be moderator. Thank you Deb and Dee and Central Office for working tirelessly in setting this up and handling the election process, including a brand-new voting ballot. And thank you to the N and E Committee members, Doctors Lenny Davidman, Julie Shaw, Rochelle Balter, Susan Warshaw, Robin Lynch, David Byram, and Bridget Amator for their considerable assistance this year and helping to see a smooth election process. It is my hope that in the future we can make improvements and increase visibility of candidates and continue to hold these election debates. Okay. Okay, so now what I will do is I will read a brief statement about each candidate in terms of their participation and service to NISPA. This is only a very small part of the accomplishments of each candidate and far more extensive biographies are available if you go to the NISPA website on the candidates' page. Their body of work, each of them, is very impressive and I really recommend you go and read it all. Due to time limitations, I'm just going to cover right now their contributions to psychology through NISPA. First, Dr. Alan Hack. Dr. Hack has held extensive positions at NISPA. He has held the positions of representative to council, executive committees member-at-large, has been parliamentarian for six presidents, and most recently is our treasurer. During his 12 years with NISPA, Dr. Hack has been a member of the OCW and psychoanalysis divisions and has been on several committees, including finance, awards, two strategic planning, bylaws, and grassroots advocacy committees, and has worked on two search committees for a new executive director. Also running for president is Dr. Dan Kaplan. Dr. Kaplan has a strong leadership record within New York State Psychological Association. He has served on numerous boards and committees, which include but are not limited to NISPA's executive committee for New York State Psychological Association, Council of Representatives for Division of Culture, Legislative Committee, Bylaws Committee, Convention Committee, Division Committee, Psychopharmacology Committee, Executive Director Search Committee, Diversity Committee, Internship Crisis Committee, Leadership Institute Fellow, LGBT Task Force, and as an associate editor and contributor to the New York State Psychologist. Again, I refer you to the website to see the full list of accomplishments of both of these excellent candidates. Okay, so now I'm going to ask Dr. Alan Hack to give his three-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Peter, for your introduction. I also want to thank Roy and the N and E Committee for organizing this town hall, to Dan for his excellent service to NISPA, and for joining me tonight, for all of you for taking time late on a Monday night to join us. We are at a critical time for our organization. Our membership has been trending downward for the past 10 years. We need to change the trend. There's only one way to accomplish this. Our strategic mission should be to focus every activity in terms of how it will help increase our membership. We must be unified in our approach. I believe that together we are stronger, that we must focus upon a united NISPA and tell each of the 13,000 psychologists of New York State that they have a home, a home which empowers them with the resources to support their professional lives, whether clinical, academic, research, or for their affiliative needs. We know that the best way to grow our membership is to unite NISPA by focusing upon our common goals, bonding our members, our committees, our regions, divisions, assuring we become more effective, relevant, and engaging. In addition, as a concrete step, I'd like to engage a marketing professional to create campaigns to attract new members from throughout New York State, so that when psychologists hear NISPA, they think of us as their professional home. I have held many positions these past 12 years with NISPA. I understand what we need. I also know that many of you realize that what we need to move us forward into a future as an association is a group that offers more programming, more benefits, more advocacy, more marketing, more assistance, more accessibility, and opportunity for intellectual growth. And when our fellow psychologists can't come to NISPA, we need to bring NISPA to them. I have been known as a person who works well with others, even those I don't always agree with. I'll continue to do so as president. I've been honored to call NISPA my professional home and its members my professional family. I hope that you have confidence in my leadership and my vision and that you vote for me as your next president. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan, and now Dr. Kaplan.
So before I begin, I would like to express gratitude to NISPA's Central Office, in particular, Deb Martinez, Dee Fisher, and so forth, for really putting this together. Moreover, I'd like to express gratitude to Roy Aranda, who had the vision to find new ways that we can reach the members. Peter Canaris, I want to thank you for taking the time out of your day to moderate this event. Alan Hack, thank you for joining me. When we first found out that each of us were running, I said, and you said, "We started as friends, we'll end as friends no matter where this goes." And to the members who have taken the time to watch this town hall, live or afterwards, I want to thank you. So my name is Dr. Daniel Kaplan, and I want to take a few moments to introduce myself as one of the candidates running for NISPA president. Being involved in NISPA leadership, task force, and divisions has been amongst the most gratifying experiences in my professional development. I believe in this organization and what it can do for our field. As your president, I would like to continue to find ways to protect practice. We are the best-trained clinicians, yet services have been farmed out to masters-level mental health providers. Moreover, psychologists continue to be underpaid by insurance companies. I will fight diligently in conjunction with our lobbyists to turn this around by highlighting the unique and indispensable skill set that we bring to the table. I will also work with the Medicaid redesign team to ensure psychologists are appropriately represented. I've had the opportunity to advocate for psychologists in Washington DC, Albany, and New York City alike. As your president, I will continue to advocate for the protection of practitioners. A second essential goal in my presidency is to ensure that NISPA becomes a home for all psychologists throughout the state. This can be actualized by creating strong collegial relationships between divisions and regional affiliates. As your president, I will enhance greater collaboration through the co-sponsorship of events, programming throughout the state, and appropriate representation throughout the association. Moreover, I will utilize my role as president to create more of a home for members of academia. This will be achieved by placing a focus on research and practice of all types. Lastly, I hope to continue to draw more interest from students in training programs. I will do so, and this will strengthen relationships between scholar-practitioners, academic institutions, and NISPA. As a corollary, I feel that the needs of grad students and ECPs should be appropriately represented. Students and ECPs are our future. We need their involvement and we need to do more to facilitate their growth in the field. The primary goal, this primary goal needs further attention. As your president, I will facilitate the creation of NISPA-sponsored searchable databases where training directors, independent practitioners can post openings. I've ran out of time, but I'll tell you more throughout the debate.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. We'll be moving now to the question portion of the evening. And again, as a reminder, we'll be alternating who takes the question first. Your time limit will be two minutes and I will give a 15-second warning prior to the end of that time period. Let me read the first question, and Dan, you will be taking the question first. One of NISPA's major challenges is membership. Our membership is low and does not reflect the majority of New York State psychologists. What specific measures would you take to increase membership?
Thank you. This is an absolutely essential issue. As we have seen, the membership continues to drop down. And one of my core beliefs is that we need to start reaching out earlier. We need to inspire the grad student. We need to inspire the ECP. We need to create initiatives to make sure that they feel that there's a home for them. So one particular initiative that I would encourage is to have a liaison in every graduate program. Make sure every single university has information about NISPA. Make sure that we reached out to practitioners who are early career and make sure that we can create mentorship so that they can set up their practices. And these are just a couple of the things that I would like to bring.
Alan, would you want me to restate the question?
No, I think I heard it. It's about membership. And as I said in my introductory remarks, I think that while I agree with Dan that we have to reach out to the students, I think we have to reach out to the mid-career psychologists. I think that there's a group out there that we have not been able to reach for many years. The students are a good source and in fact, but it's the mid-career where we're going to, where we're losing people. They're already here in New York. They're in practice. We need to focus on figuring out what they need and how to make NISPA relevant. One way we do that is our mid-career fellows program. I support it 100%. I wanted to continue with a lot of strength. So that's one area where I think specifically we have to really continue. The other is what I said in my introductory remarks. We've been trying to market, we've been trying to figure out the market for many, many years. I've been through many membership committees. I've worked on them. I've worked on the surveys. It hasn't helped us that much. I think we need marketing professionals. I think we have to put some dollars into it and stop trying to do it. We're not marketing professionals. We are psychologists. So I really believe strongly in the idea of bringing some marketing specialists in and figuring out how to reach those mid-career psychologists. I also have said that some of our members have come up with some great ideas and talked to me about them, and I really look forward to implementing them, ways of bringing in people that have, because when you have a family, it's a problem to get away. We need to help them get away to find time for NISPA. As I said, we want to bring NISPA to them. I think we have to increase our teleconferencing and our ability to use teleconferences for all our programming. And then finally, which everybody agrees on, I think that cross-state, we need to increase programming that is relevant to people all across the state.
Thank you, Alan. Alan, you'll be taking this next one first. In what direction would you like to see NISPA headed in five years? And how will you accomplish this as president?
Well, in five years, I'd like NISPA to be much stronger in terms of its membership and its programming. I think that we have, in the last five years, we have focused on advocacy, and I love our legislative program. I love our agenda. I think it can grow, but I think and feel very strongly that in Albany, we have a voice that is very well-respected right now. That was not like that for many years. So I think that our next five years should be focused on membership, membership, membership. I think that we will be able to bring more people in using programming that's going to attract and excite people, using academic work to bring people in and say, "Oh, that's a place I could publish." I think there are a lot of different ways to encourage and increase and attract people to NISPA. I want the numbers to increase. I will start that during my presidency. When you say five years, I'm only president for one year, but I think we can start the ball rolling and really continue and hit the ground running on these membership issues.
Thank you, Alan. Dan?
Yeah, the first place I would start is membership. And in terms of increasing membership, we touched on this last question, but when I was on the APS Student Caucus Board, one of the initiatives that they did was to have liaisons to bring people in, and their numbers skyrocketed. Their numbers went up. So aside from these membership drives, I think that the first place I would start is making sure that NISPA is a home for everybody. I really think that we need to unify NISPA. Whether you're in the farthest remote aspect of New York, a far-out region, whether you're in New York City, whether you're in an academic post, whether you're a clinician, whether you're early career, whether you're mid-career, whether you're late career, I think we need to work on unifying NISPA. And the way I would do that comes from Daniel Kohaneman. Daniel Kohaneman talks about a concept called adversarial collaboration. Instead of asking people about their ideas, put people with different views of, points of view on a task. Have them work together and the product is beautiful. And I believe that if we can unify all members of NISPA, we're going to increase our membership as well. So that's where I would take us, is a more unified whole, one NISPA.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next question, and this would go to you, Dan, first. What would be the first three things you'd want to accomplish during the first six months of your tenure as president?
Well, that's a really important question, but I would actually pull it back towards my president-elect year. I don't see it as us starting our job when we become president. So I would like to get the ball rolling earlier. And one of the things that I'd like to address is our post-doc crisis. We are in peril. There is a bottleneck and it takes considerable time for our newly graduated ECPs to get licensed. So one initiative that I would love to do is to create a searchable database where individuals who are independent practitioners, outpatient clinics, inpatient facilities can post a searchable job to get these hours. Now, I know that APA and APIC do a reasonable job with this, but there are a lot of other non-APA, non-APIC accredited post-docs that could help with the hours process. So that's the first thing I would like to do. The second thing I would like to do is to make sure that we increase seats on every board. I think the more seats we have at the table, the better. So I would like to see a designated seat for an ECP or a diversity member who can represent the issues that we need done. And then the third thing, which is very practical, is I would like to have planned my, I would like to have planned my convention that would integrate all of the aspects of psychology, science, practice, early career, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Alan?
I appreciate Dan starting, but he did take my first line, which was the same thing, which is you don't start when you're president, you start when you're president-elect. And I appreciate that you have to hit the ground running in terms of, in terms of when you are elected. That's why we have president-elect, is to really be able to hit the ground as soon as you're president. So I also will focus on many things during that year, and one of them is to start looking at this marketing issue. I really, I'm pushing it, I'm going to push it, is to get a marketing professional so that we can understand what we need to do to get out in the world and bring more members in. I also want to work really closely with Deb, and the reason for this has to do with something that I've always been a champion of, particularly as treasurer now, which is non-dues money, non-dues income. I want to go to foundations. I want to be a visible person that goes out there and shakes hands and says to people, "You need to provide funds for us. You can be a sponsor. You can do all sorts of things." I want to work hand-in-hand with Deb to get that money in here, because the more of that money that we have, the more programming, the more sophisticated our reaching out will be, and I think that that's going to be an opportunity for us to grow. So that's one, that's two things. I agree, we have to have a great convention. I want to have a great convention. Every year we have a great convention, the better off we are. It goes back to what we were talking about, which is I want people to believe that when they present at NISPA, that's going to look good for them. That's going to be something that they can write on their resume. If they get an article published, I'm going to look into getting us a new journal, a peer reviewed journal, so that when people get published and they get published through New York State Psychological Association, that is considered a plum, a thing for the resume. So those are my ideas on that.
Okay, thank you, Alan, and this will go to you first, Alan. NISPA divisions have been voicing for a few years that they want control of each division's finances, return to each division's board of directors. What is your opinion on this matter and what actions would you take?
I'm first?
Yes, Alan.
Yes.
Unfair. Only unfair because I have a lot of knowledge and understanding about this. While I understand the divisions wish for their autonomy over their funds, the truth is it's a very complicated issue. It's complicated both from a legal perspective, from an accounting best practices perspective, and from just an overall financial picture perspective. We need to understand our relationship to our divisions. It's very difficult. They are very active. They do raise money. In fact, I can tell you right now, in division funds, there's $150,000 within division funds that are not, that have not been used this year. It's a very complicated issue. I wish there were an easy answer. There's really not. We are being told on one side by accountants and professionals, this is not best practices. We're being told on the other side by people on division boards, understandably, it's like, "Well, wait, this is our money. It's really not anybody's money. It's NISPA's money." We need to find a way of using this. This is one of those things where it feels divisive when it doesn't and shouldn't have to be. It is all of our money. It's all of our, it's all of our resource. We should be using it for all of us, not just for any one division, but for all of us. So as I said, we struggle with the issue. We had many votes on it. The other thing here that speaks to what we're talking about is, even when I differ, I listen to what the council says. As a president, I would do the same. I may have different points of view. I may, I will present my rationale, and if, I also believe, I also believe in the wisdom of council, and I have listened to and not broken any of the rules that council sets. So I work together. You know, Dan talked about that a little bit, and I want to just say, when you work on things together, that's what makes you stronger and better. I agree with him 100%, and it's always been my motto, bring people that disagree with me forward. I will work with them.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Dan, same question?
Sure. I actually think this is a great question because this is one of the few questions where you could distinguish between Alan and myself. I'm on the opposite side of the fence. I strongly believe that divisions should have autonomy in their finances. This is, this has been a discussion in the Division of Culture, Race, and Ethnicity. We've, every time that this issue has come up, we brought it to our board. Our board consistently voted this down, consistently voted it down. One thing I will tell you is that while there's $150,000 in the treasury, our division, which is a relatively small or medium division, spent $6,000 roughly on one of the best conferences that I've attended this year, and that's the Microaggressions Conference. If you give divisions the right over their funds, you will see, they will put together some really nice events, and I'm opposed. The other thing, the other concern that I have is that when you put it in the hands of one person, it gets harder and harder for reimbursement. There have been problems in the past, and this is something that I would like to rectify. And going forward, should I become president, I will push for divisions to have autonomy over their funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, next question, this goes to you first, Dan. What characteristics do you see as your personal strength that would enable you to be the best leader for NISPA?
Thank you. Personal strengths? Well, I think that Alan has been around for 12 years. I've been around for seven, so he's, he's been around a little bit longer, but when you assume as many positions that Alan and I have, you pick up some skills along the way. And one of the core values and strengths that I have is trying to see all points of view and trying to find the middle path, trying to find that golden road in the middle so that we can unify. And that goes back to my vision, where I think that we need to become more unified. And instead of having this opinion and that opinion, well, maybe we're not talking about the issue. And if we can identify the differences in what the issue is, maybe we can come to some resolution. This has been my position both on boards as well as in my writing. I've always written from a very big-picture point of view, and should I be president, I bring a more global perspective to NISPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Alan, same question to you.
I'm still reacting. I have to say, Dan, I disagree with your characterization of me and you having a different opinion on the last question. I actually did say, and tried to say, this is a complicated issue, and that in fact, I am in the center and will work with people. What I said was on the other side, on each side, there is reasons for it. So it's not, I think setting us against each other that way didn't fit with what you just said. So I'm sorry, I have to say that because I want to keep this positive, but I can't let you assign something to me that is not accurate. So going back to what you said, my strengths are to be forward, to be direct, to tell people the way I see it, and to also listen. So I do present my ideas very clearly, very forcefully, but I also listen really well. I'm very careful a listener. I try to understand the other person's perspective. It's something that I've done in my practice, it's something that I've done in my personal life. It's really important to me, it's a core belief that everybody deserves a certain, deserves respect.
Absolutely.
And I tell that in my organizational work, I tell managers, you can criticize and complain and talk with someone, but they know when you don't respect them. And being respected and being respectful is really important to me.
Since I was mentioned, can I get 15 seconds to respond to that?
All right, go right ahead.
Okay. I certainly want to hear your point of view, and I apologize if I mischaracterize. What is your position, a definitive position on divisions and their finances? Are you for it or against it, just in case I missed it?
Okay, Dan. What you just said is exactly the point. You're trying to make it for or against. It can't be. There are laws that we have to follow. There are accounting principles we have to follow. I would love to give all of the divisions autonomy, but I can't because I know that there's financial laws that are affecting me. And so by presenting it as a for or an against, you're creating a problem that doesn't take into account all the information. That's why I started by saying, oh, this is a problem, because I was the treasurer, I had to face those rules and laws and understand what was happening. Okay? So that's why. When you say, are you for or against it, I'm neither. I am to finding a solution to a problem. And we haven't found that solution. We've tried a lot of different ways, we haven't found the solution. I am all for continuing to work on it. I do not want to hurt anybody. I am not trying to create problems. I am trying to follow the rules and the law.
All right, Alan, I'm going to have to hold us there on that question. I need to move on to our next question. Alan, you will be the first one to answer. Being president of NISPA requires 20 hours or more per week, and being president-elect and past president requires just a little less time. Given your present responsibilities, how do you envision making this commitment for three years?
Well, for me, that's an easy one. I've been on EC for how many years now? It's been built into my schedule to participate. I've been at every meeting at 9:30, at 9 o'clock. There are very few meetings that I've ever missed. In fact, in terms of council meetings, I think I've missed two, maybe three, and one of them was my son's bar mitzvah. So I think that, for me, NISPA is part of my life and it's integrated. Now, that's for the regular part. When you talk about being president, one of the reasons that I waited so long to run for president, because they've been asking me for at least as long as I've been involved, is because I said to them, I have to wait till my children go to college. Well, I have to tell you, I didn't expect it to be so soon, but my children are both in college, so it is freed up. I have what is called empty nest syndrome. It has freed up a great deal of time. I really will be able to commit myself to NISPA. I'll be able to commit myself as much as I have and even more. And I'm really looking forward to the opportunity and hope I'm given the opportunity to spend that 20 hours a week, working toward making NISPA great.
Thank you, Alan. Dan, same question to you.
So I think Alan hit it on its head. When you ask 10, 20 hours, we're already doing that. That's what we already do. If you look at the amount of boards we currently serve on, and maybe I'm selling Alan, which is probably not a good thing, but he and I both are very active in the association, we probably put about 10 hours in now, weekly. So I, look, I think it's more of the same. And for me, I've always been a very efficient person. Just to give you an idea of my schedule, currently, I teach five courses at one university, two courses at another university. I have a practice. I have my children who are not in college, and yet I still find the time to step up, be effective, and make things happen. It's just more of the same. I have the record of being able to do this, and I'm not worried, and I welcome and celebrate that challenge.
Thank you, Dan. This next question begins with you, Dan. What advocacy and legislative issues would you push as president?
They're all important. So I have been very strong with RXP, I've done research with RXP, I've been on the RXP committee since 2011, but I think it's, we don't want to get caught in a one-issue legislation. The legislation that I would push would depend on what the legislative committee says is going to move. And for that, I think it's essential that we speak to our lobbyists, speak to legislative committee, have constant dialogue and communication. But they're all important. And I actually, I'm proud of NISPA's legislative agenda. Serving on a legislative committee for the last couple years, I see how hard we work. I see how hard we split the hairs of little things even before it goes to council. So if you're asking me to choose between my children, that's a tough one. So whatever will move, I will move.
Okay, Alan, same question to you.
Well, you know, obviously, the two of us have a lot in common in this area. We both support very strongly the legislative agenda, the legislative committee. We both believe very strongly in lobbying. I'm a grassroots guy. I go to my local person, you know, my local representative. I've talked to him, I actually have a relationship with him. I think that we really are, as I said earlier, I think our legislative agenda has been our best, our best and most powerful part of our process in the last five years, and I'd like to see it grow. Again, when you say, which would you push, I push all of the ones that are important. And it's not me that decides that, it's all of us that decide that. We vote on it, the legislative committee, the council, we get a lot of buy-in in terms of our various legislative agendas. So I don't think that rides with the president. I think the president's job is to make sure when we go to Albany, which I've done, and I'm sitting with that legislator, I convince them that what we're trying to say to them is the most important thing, and that they should really sponsor and support our legislative agenda. And I've had a lot of success with that. I've even, again, this is one of those things, I was able to take a legislator that looked like they were really against something, I think it was actually RXP, and I actually was able to say something to her that changed her mind a little bit. And it's such an exciting moment in the legislative process, when you look at a legislator and you're able to change your mind. So I support the agenda, I don't choose sides, I support what we're doing, including RXP.
Okay.
Thank you.
This next question will go to you first, Alan. NISPA has very strong personalities, and there are different views as to what is best for the organization. Can you give an example of a difficult situation in which you had to bridge varying visions?
Oh, thank you. I actually do have a good example. I was worried, I thought, oh, I wish Dan got this one first, so I'd have time. But I actually do think about it. When we did that very difficult strategic planning committee, we worked really hard to create a strategic plan. There were obviously issues around that that became very contentious. There were new members that were brought on specifically to focus on being on the, in quotes, "other side" of whatever the issue was. They were brought to the committee. When they came to the committee, I welcomed them with open arms, I listened carefully to what they had to say, and dare say, I listened so much that we took some of their ideas into account, and I was able to point out to them some of the rationale for what we're doing. I do believe in rational thought, I do believe in explaining to people where you're coming from. I think it's a genuine place for me. When I believe in something, I'm very genuine about it, but I also listen to the other side and try to work with them and either convince them of what I believe for the reasons I believe it, or hear what they have to say. So I had that experience in the strategic planning committee, and it went very well. At the end, the people that were brought in thought I had done a wonderful job.
Thank you, Alan. Dan, the same question to you.
Sure. We have difficult or strong personalities in this association? Is that true? No. I figured I'd break the ice. In terms of this, I don't see it as personality that matters. I think it's making sure you're clear on the issues. If you can separate the issue from the personality, then we can move things forward in a very clear and concrete and successful way. So this is not about personalities, but this is about bridging disparate viewpoints. When the NISPA bylaws were introduced, there was a move from having three years to get your membership up to a desire for it to be one year, right, in order to maintain your representation. DCRE has traditionally been a smaller division, and we were concerned as a division about making sure that we didn't lose our representation, because if you ask me, diversity, diversity is the golden thread that goes through everything. Imagine us losing our representation. So I had the privilege, myself and Anuraj, we had the privilege of like comparing the old bylaws to the new bylaws and giving point, counterpoint, and the strengths of this. And we were able to like bridge these different points of view to what the current bylaws look like, which is one year, nine months, if I'm estimating it. That change was about three years is too much, and being able to listen to the other...
15 minutes, seconds.
I got 15 minutes? Three years being too much, but one year not being enough for the smaller divisions, and making sure that we can include everybody rather than exclude everybody. And that turned out to be our current wording. So I'm very proud of that.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, this also goes to you first. How would you go about supporting programming and seeking sources of funding for the Leadership Institute?
Okay. So this goes back to something Alan said, is we have so many untapped resources, right? We have the advantage that we're a nonprofit, we could apply for grants and funds. I have not seen a very strong grant record yet, but I want to bring that. I believe that whether it's sponsorship activities, whether it's grant activities, that's important. Currently, we have one, well, we have several strong benefactors, but one in particular seems to donate to everything, and that's our own Roya Ronda, right? So he donates everything, but we need to make sure that we're getting external funding as well. So grants are important. Partnering with various psychological test companies, partnering with, I think we do a little bit with the insurance trusts and so forth, making sure that we have external funding just as much as we have internal funding. That would be my core focus.
Okay. And to you, Alan?
You know, I think that the Leadership Institute has been something I've supported since the beginning. I think it's one of the premier institutes around. It really helps bring in mid-career fellows like Dan and others that all go on, that many go on to leadership positions. So all along, I've been very supportive of it through all the, through the budgeting process, through the foundation, when we had money in the foundation. I think that it's an excellent, excellent program, and I want to continue to have it flourish. Now, when you talk about funding for it, it's clear, we haven't had the outside grants, we haven't had the person in place. And this actually goes back to understanding the needs of NISPA. That's why I want the marketing professional, because now we have a grant professional. We have someone that knows how to get sponsorship money in our new ED. And I want to support her 100% because she knows how to go out there and say, hey, this is a way that we get people involved. And I have to say, not only people, I want to commend our Leadership Training Institute for bringing in diversity. It has always been a diverse group that comes through it. I'm always very proud to meet them and talk with them. It's really a great way of bringing in diversity, and it's a great way of bringing in marketing, because the institute itself, just to have it, shows that we're investing in the next generation. And that's really important. We need to invest in our next generation, and we need to invest in our current generation. So that's what I would say in terms of the funding and the importance of the Leadership Institute.
Okay, thank you, Alan. All right, we actually now come to our final question, and it will begin with Alan. What actions would you take to foster a greater integration of regions and divisions?
Well, I think that, I think that that's exactly the point. We have to provide, divisions are very downstate-oriented. Whenever a division does a program, or most of the time they do a program, it's downstate. It's within a very small group, and it makes sense. A lot of our members are here, and it's good to have access. So what do we need to do to bring our regions in? We need to provide programming where they are. We need divisions to take responsibility for making sure that whatever programming they do, you have teleconferencing, you have video, you have programs that you run in places where maybe not as many people come, but where it is upstate. So I am in full agreement that divisions and regions should be unified. I think that programming for divisions needs to be expanded to include other members of the state, and I support that 100%. And we need to figure out how to do that. I don't think that's been the focus up to this point. I think up to this point, divisions have just been focusing within a very small area, and I want that expanded, and I will encourage that. I do know there's been some of our members that have started doing that. They talk about the roadshow and going and getting members together with regions and pairing with regions. I think it's a great thing. I think it has to be expanded and even codified in some way. This is what we do as a division. We have to include and understand all of our members, not just the ones that are close by for our programming.
Thank you, Alan, and the same question to you, Dan?
Okay, thank you. So Alan and I have very similar perspectives on this one. We must go out to the regions. So the concept of a traveling roadshow is absolutely essential, making sure that we can bring conferences to anyone throughout the state. In fact, I was invited, I believe Alan was as well, to go up to Syracuse, which we're both going to go up to. If any region invites me to go up there, or anywhere throughout the state, I want to go there. I want to make sure that every region, division, group, or entity knows that I represent them, and I care about their interests. So a traveling roadshow is absolutely essential. In addition, the concept of teleconferencing is wonderful. Here we are, this is a great example of how you can get people in various locations together, right? So exploring greater uses of technology, that would be useful. One thing that I would like to consider, and obviously, it's an opt-in, not a mandate, would be the concept of an adopt-a-region. This is something that I would love to see. Divisions and regions pair up. This goes in line with my view of unifying the association. There are groups within the association who, as Alan said, have considerable finances. Why not support our region so that we can... Why not support our region so that we can make sure they, they thrive and flourish as well?
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so we've come to, uh, the closing portion of our meeting. And, uh, this is the time where each one of you will have two minutes to give your closing statement. Dan, you go first. Uh, you may begin.
Okay, so I, I want to end the same way I started, which is an absolute expression of gratitude. Um, you know, this process is, is illuminating. It's, it's helpful for, uh, the prospective voters to see where we stand. Um, I would like to reiterate though, my initiatives, that what I want to do, I want everyone to know that I want to protect the practice. I want to unify, uh, psychology as a whole, whether it be division or region, uh, whether it be the scholar, whether it be the practitioner. I want to represent all forms of clinical practice, whether it be CBT, psychoanalysis. I want to make sure all members of the community, whether it be mid-level career, late-level career, early career or grad student, feel that they have a home here. One thing that I didn't have a chance to touch on is that I think another way to draw a membership is maybe starting even a little bit earlier with the undergrads. I have had the privilege in my, my post in the university of working with undergrads, getting them to grad school. I've had the privilege of taking people in grad school, getting them through their programs. And many of them have joined NISP, have become active in NISP. And that is a process that I want to bring, is that if you look at my perspective, it's about unity. It's about making sure everyone feels that they have a home. And that requires, uh, an open tent and I'm happy to bring it.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, Alan, your closing statement.
Yeah, I would like to start by saying I also am grateful. I'm grateful to everyone on this call. I'm grateful to NISP for giving me the opportunity to grow, to learn, to understand more about our profession. I want to really thank Dan. I, I have to say, Dan, I really get along with you. I said it to you before. We've, we've talked about it. We have very similar views. We both want to unify. I believe I can do that as president of NISP. I believe that I can bring together all the parts of NISP and, and, and move us forward. That's actually what I want to do. I want to not have to worry so much about internal politics and really focus on getting money, getting membership, moving forward, great programming, all of those things that are so important to, to me, to our members. I, I, I'm, I'm tired of the internal battles that have gone on and I want to bridge all the gaps and make all the compromises so we can move forward, so that we can have great programming, so that we can involve every psychologist in New York and psychologist-to-be, I guess, also. I really do want that. I think I can lead us in that direction. I really hope that you'll give me that opportunity.
Well, I want to thank you, Alan, and you, Dan, for presenting your views so well. Uh, I've been involved with NISP for many years and I've seen just so many strong and productive presidents. And I'm confident after listening to the two of you, that tradition will continue. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Dee Fisher for, uh, her technical help in putting this together. Uh, I want to thank Roy Aranda, uh, and his NNE committee for really starting us off on this innovative, uh, uh, launch into the use of new technologies. So, uh, this, this recording will be made available to all NISP members and I wish you all a good night.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.